And I will call the meeting to order, seeing that we have a quorum of planning board members present. Welcome to those sitting in our audience and folks who are watching at home. The first order of business will be the Pledge of Allegiance. If anyone would please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unto God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'd like the minutes to reflect that Justin Norman can't be with us tonight, so he is excused. Are there any members of the public who wish to provide any comments to anything that is not on the agenda tonight? Seeing there are none, I'll close the public comments. Board members, everyone's probably had a chance to review the March 20th, 2012 meeting minutes. Do I have a motion to accept?
Make a motion to approve the planning board minutes of 21412 as presented.
March?
March.
20th.
20th. I read the wrong date, I'm sorry.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any comments, any edits?
Just.
Peter?
Page four, line 43. I believe the word should be "to the extent possible, not the intent possible."
Okay. Thank you.
That's the only thing I have.
Okay, the only edit I have is on page six, line 22. The sentence should read, "There was discussion of whether this would be a condition or a Any other comments or edits? We can just approve as amended, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, all those in favor of approving the minutes from March 20th, 2012 as amended?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. So moved. Okay. Under regular business, we have a preliminary conceptual consultation for residential development. The lot is located at Two Elm Drive, tax map U2, Lot 243, in the B1 zone. Before we get into this discussion, I would like to read the specific regulation regarding preliminary conceptual consultation, just for benefit of our discussion, as well as people who are hearing this at home. This falls under the RSA 676-4 Roman numeral true A and under our site plan regulations under 2.01. The preliminary conceptual consultation, this meeting shall be directed at a review of the basic concept of the proposal and suggestions it might be of assistance in resolving problems with meeting requirements during final consideration. The board and the applicant may discuss proposals in conceptual form only and in general terms such as desirability of types of development and proposals under the master plan. The presentation to the board of new surveys, engineering plans, or similar materials shall not be allowed under this process, so the chairman must be careful to keep these discussions at a general level. Typically, maps from the master plan, tax maps, county soil survey maps, and the like are acceptable levels of generality upon which to base these discussions. Such consultations shall not bind either the applicant or the board, and statements made by the board member shall not be the basis for disqualifying said members or invalidating any action taken. Such discussion may occur without the necessity of giving formal public notice, but such discussions may occur only at a formal meeting of the board. The preliminary conceptual consultation meetings are strictly optional to the applicant. This is very different from the design review, because this has not been noticed to the abutters. So, we just want to be cognizant, the applicant, as well as us as board members, to keep this level at a very general level relative to potential proposed use and the master plan, and to basically answer questions the applicant might have about the next step of the process. Is Bill, Mr. Doucette, you're fine with that?
Absolutely.
Okay. Any questions by the members? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Bill Doucette from Doucette Survey. With me this evening is Gary Decker, the owner of Two Elm Drive, which is on tax map U2, Lot 243. That is on Lincoln Street. And we are before you this evening to listen to the planning board. This is a vacant lot. It is in the B1 zone. And the rest of Lincoln Street is in the R3 zone, and the Nichols Ave, Washington, and Lincoln are all in the R3 zone. Mr. Decker desires to do a multifamily residential development out here, a combination of duplexes. Looking at the neighborhood, for example, looking at an aerial view of the neighborhood, along Lincoln Street, there are several duplexes, and there's one 11-unit building at the end of Lincoln Street. And our proposal is to mirror the character of the neighborhood. So, about the same shape, scale, as along Lincoln Street, mirroring and crossing the other side, on our side of Lincoln Street, and with a yield of somewhere between 12 and 15 units. Not allowed in the B1 zone, and it is more than the R3 zone allows, but it is significantly less than the density of the neighborhood that we're within. The B1 zone is, as the "B" refers to, is a business zone. And we don't see this lot being a viable business location. So, what we really want to do this evening, I'll ask Mr. Decker to step up in a moment and tell you a little bit about himself, but what we really want to do this evening is hear feedback from the board. I've had the opportunity to have some very preliminary discussions with your planner, and want to hear what the board's thoughts are on what they envision at this vacant lot and in this area of New Market. So, at that, I'd like to invite Mr. Decker up to tell you a little bit about himself.
Thank you and good evening. My name is Gary Decker, and my family purchased this vacant lot that we're discussing tonight at Two Elm Drive, along with the eight-unit brick building that's in front of that on Two Elm Street. So, that is directly across the street from the library. I think many of you know that that building was built in 1827, and it has a white split picket fence in front of it. In addition, we purchased the duplex adjacent to Two Elm Street, which is 1-3 Elm Drive. It's kind of a dead-end street, I guess, that we also own that splits the two garages on Elm Street. My family and I are very small-scale real estate investors. As Bill previously stated, we'd like to develop this lot currently. I think you all know that it's contaminated with weeds that are four to five feet high and various amounts of debris. I mean, we can't even mow the lot, because there's so much debris on it, we can't even get a tractor in there with a bush hog to mow it. So, it's very unsightly, and we'd like to do something about that. As Bill said, whatever we build, if we're allowed to build there, it will be in keeping with the abutting neighborhood. We have no desire to make glamorous, high-rise buildings or anything of the sort. We wish to be good neighbors. We wish to have everything we do be extremely nice and in keeping with the neighborhood. Bill mentioned on Lincoln Avenue, there are currently four or five duplexes there, and our thought at the moment, without your counsel, is to have some duplexes that mirror the size and shape and so forth of the existing duplexes on the other side, the west side of Lincoln Avenue. We feel you'll soon see what kind of owners we are, because, as I mentioned, we also bought Two Elm Street, which is that historic building on top of the hill with the white picket fence. We're going to remove the fence, because it's not repairable, and custom-make the split picket portion of the fence, keeping the fence posts, which are original. It has to be custom-built, because the length of each picket section is 12 feet 6 inches, which is not a standard length, so we have to have it custom-made. We are going to have it be made to look exactly the way it was when it was originally built, somewhere around 1850, I believe. In addition, we're going to paint the outside trim completely, and we're going to completely do a landscape design for that building, and it will be done by Stratum Circle Nursery, which I'm sure you're all familiar with. And on the inside, we're going to strip off all the old wallpaper in the common area, fix all the plaster, paint the walls, and trim, sand, and polyurethane the floors. So, we're really hopeful that, once completed, you know, in the latter part of the summer, that we'll have a building that's going to look very nice and very presentable, of course, on that hill overlooking the mill buildings, once again. And I like to think that that'll be very representative of what we intend to do with our development project as well. Thank you very much for your time.
I think probably the most pressing question is, would be, why would you be before the planning board at this point in time when we could not act on a proposal that would not be allowed in the B1 zone prior to getting a variance?
Because we are in the very early stages of this. We haven't gone to any design level. We've done some sketches, and we thought it would be very important, before we get working hard on that, to get as much feedback as possible from the community. And where the planning board works on the master plan, the planning board works on review of zoning, rezoning, this seemed to be the right body to go before and seek advice from.
So, am I hearing that as part of, I think the public should be aware, and I'm sure you are, Bill, that the zoning update committee is very actively looking at the B1 zone. So, I guess what I'm hearing is you would like us to consider this particular section of the B1, relative to what's allowed now and what a potential use may be.
Absolutely.
Okay.
You know, I think this lot, and you have tax maps before you that show the lot, I should have also given you a zoning map. And this lot in the B1 zone is somewhat isolated. It is surrounded by R3.
Okay. I'll just comment particularly for people at home. The lot that we're referring to is typically known as the Marcel property.
Yes.
I think most people sitting at home will recognize that. And relative to the B1 district that it falls under, that property, as well as properties along Elm Street up to Nichols Ave, also fall into the B1 zone, as well as the parking lots across our B1. So, we're looking really at that section of town, not a particular lot that we may be talking about.
Certainly.
Okay.
So, I don't know if there's something that I can say to kind of kick off a free flow of ideas. This is completely non-binding. It's a preliminary. We're just trying to have the opportunity to talk and listen.
So, the discussion, I think, should be concentrated relative to potentially modifying the properties which are in the B1 zone in this area to an alternative zone, whether it's the M2 or the R3 that was mentioned. I guess I mentioned M2. But does it fall, does this isolated B1 fall more in line with land uses that it abuts versus B1 along 108? Probably the best way to discuss that.
To kind of frame this, as part of our preparations for tonight's meeting, I took a look at our master plan, albeit the land use chapter is a little bit out of date. It was completed in 2001. But I was able to glean some information from the master plan that I think has some relevance. And the first item is from our vision statement, which states that in New Market, we want to maintain a friendly, small-town atmosphere by encouraging community functions, recreational opportunities, residential uses, and businesses within walking distance of the downtown. In Chapter 10, it talks about the interest of continuing to provide a wide range of opportunities for housing and to continue to provide diversity, which we have a very diverse housing stock. And duplexes are recognized as part of the desired diversity of housing in the town, provided that the integrity of existing neighborhoods is preserved. And in another section, it refers specifically to this Elm Street area as a moderate-to-high-density residential area within walking distance to the downtown. I wasn't able to pull out anything that was specific to, that spoke to the appropriateness of business uses in that particular area. So, I just wanted to kind of give everyone an overview of what I found, maybe you found other things that might be applicable.
Well, I'm actually glad that you kind of opened up that discussion, because even just in the recent Chapter 6 rewrite, we go into, you know, discussion on the B1 zone, but there's absolutely no discussion about this part of the B1 zone in the 2011, you know, write-up. It really talks about the 108 B1 zone. So, that was a question kind of I wanted to throw out there to think about. And again, in another location, it talks about signage, and it's all about Route 108 for B1. So, I was kind of thinking, did that get missed somehow? And it talks about the economic nodes in downtown New Market, about building up density to support downtown businesses. I definitely am in agreement with Diane. The Chapter 10, Chapter 5, which is housing, is long overdue. I think we can discuss later about getting that on a project to-do list.
I find it interesting, when I looked at the permitted uses for the B1 zone, and thinking about whether, I mean, I'm a resident, so thinking about whether that's the type of use I'd like to see out there, or if I lived on Lincoln Street, if that'd be the type of use I'd want to see there, and not all of them.
And we have some members of the public. Would anyone care to comment about the, and again, we're not talking about any specific proposal. We're really talking from a general level of this area that's Zone B1, of does it make sense to consider, or what people's ideas might be relative to, should that be on the table about discussions of making it more consistent with the surrounding neighborhood? Is there anyone that would care to?
I'm an abutter, actually.
This is all non-binding, so we, yeah.
I'm on Washington.
Okay. So, if you'd come to the mic, please, and just give us your name for the...
Martin McKenzie, 6 Washington Street. It's actually the last house on Washington Street at the elbow with Lincoln Street. And so, I have always been, you know, interested and concerned about what is, what kind of development goes in there. You know, from what I've heard from the owner tonight, I'm very encouraged. You know, he says he wants to do something that's in keeping with, you know, the character of the neighborhood. And since this was a part of the, what, quickly-defunct historic district of New Market, I'm encouraged that someone actually wants to come into that area and has, seems to be motivated to actually develop along the lines of what's already there and what will really continue to make New Market, you know, an attractive, architecturally-consistent neighborhood. So, I liked what I hear here.
Mr. McKenzie, you're in a duplex?
I'm sorry?
Are you in one of the duplexes that was referenced, about in the abutting neighborhood?
Actually not. Actually not. I'm in what they call a condex, which is a house that's got half, and it's not right across from them there, but...
Two-unit.
It's two units.
It is two units, yes. I will just mention that one of those across the street, at least one of them, is not a duplex. I'll just mention that. One right on the corner there.
And is there any commercial in this area at all right now, other than Lamprey Healthcare, when that's really what I'm going to say, nonprofit? Any other comments from the public? And how about any comments from the board?
I would prefer that it contain fewer units. That's a personal desire.
So, just relative to if there's action taken to potentially rezone this?
Yes.
We would be conscientious of density?
Yes, I'd be conscious of density, and I'm excited about your refurbishing of Two Elm Street. I think that's a pivotal property for the town, and that would be wonderful if this lot could carry some of that architecture back. That would be great. I mean, I think, as you said, built in 1827, I think if you're looking to that as an inspiration for the lot for 243, I could expect good things.
So, I understand that your preference is that maybe the concept here, as far as how you would want to develop, you'd like to see where the planning board's going to go with the zoning in the area versus moving forward with the variance coming before us?
Yeah, I mean...
I don't, just don't understand what your, or, excuse me, wouldn't want to assume what your timeframe is.
There's no set timeframe. My client's probably cringing when I say that, but we don't want to force this design by regulations. We would rather find out what the community wants and try to work with, and certainly there's going to be some differences of opinion, but try to work with that. Should we, the other avenue is come up with a design, submit to the ZVA for variance in the B1 zone, and, I mean, multifamily's not even permitted in the B1 zone.
Right. Any residential?
So, that didn't seem like a logical direction to be heading. And although it may not seem like, we've talked a lot tonight, I've heard a lot of good ideas. I mean, I've heard comments on density, I've heard comments on landscaping and architectural. I think that's all in line of what we've been thinking, so I'm encouraged. I think what we will do at this, after tonight's meeting, is, you know, we will meet again to chart out our course, certainly know that these kind of changes don't happen overnight. But I am aware that the planning board is currently looking at rewrites and reviewing, and I'm optimistic that, you know, maybe this is an area that falls within that review. And if not, we'll have, maybe we look at a different direction. But typically, when a client comes to me, it's, "I want to be on the construction in three months." I'm not hearing that yet, so we're trying to do things a little bit more relaxed right now.
Great. Thank you.
Definitely would be preferable to a warehouse.
There's lots allowed in the B1.
Oh, yeah, you can keep looking down through that list.
Diane, if you could help us with process, would it, when we're doing a zoning update, are, is, are the owners within the district notified when we, when it comes before the planning board?
Actually, that's an interesting question. The RSA's are very clear that in a case of a variance, in a subdivision, in a site review, that you have to have a public hearing. For zoning changes, you do not have to have a public hearing. However, it would behoove the town in making any zoning map changes in particular, that there would be notification of an abutter, so that we would give everybody the opportunity to participate in those discussions.
So, I think, and we were disappointed with the low turnouts that we had at our public hearings about the B1, and I can't recall anyone from this particular area coming. You know, maybe we have funding in the planning budget to do, to put on the agenda at some point in the near future, because it's going to facilitate what we're doing right now for this particular area, for the owners within the B1 and the abutting owners to this island, if you will, to have a hearing and get some feedback before we present, hey, you know, this is how we want to change this area. You know, because I don't, it may not make sense to put it in generality with the whole rest of 108.
Right. I think that makes sense.
Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Excellent. Thank you very much for your time this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Doucette.
Good luck.
It's nice meeting you, Mr. Decker.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is... I wanted to move that around, if you are okay, Diane.
That's fine. No, that's fine. You're sure, gentlemen.
The one I had all my notes on. It's like I've put my pile on it. Here. Diane, if you wouldn't mind giving the planners' report, just because that might fall into some discussions.
Oh, sure. Very quickly. You're with me? Okay. Just a couple of updates. We finally received approval from the State of New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services on the subdivision plan that, of the town for property out on Wadley Falls Road. If you recall, that came into the planning board last September, and there were several conditions, and we just got the approval. So, those plans are ready to be signed, and Madam Chairman, if you would sign the plans after the meeting tonight, that would be great. We have heard back from the attorney who's handling the proposed animal crematorium application that will be coming before the zoning board of adjustment and the planning board. So, that will be coming into us in the next couple of months for review. I'm still working with the McAllen Dam Removal Committee, and they have a meeting scheduled on April 19th with Deb Loyzell from the Department of Environmental Services and Eric Hudson, who's with NOAA, to give an overview of their funding programs. And we'll also be meeting with Rob Sinkmars, who is a gentleman who has met with the town council in the past about the potential of the McAllen Dam to generate hydroelectric energy and the potential at the dam, and we're going to be hearing from him and having a report from him. We have also received a visit from an attorney, land planner, who has an option on the golf course property, and he presented to me a plan for a single-family open space development on the golf course property. And the open space would be the actual golf course, which would be retained and remain as a public golf course. And they have plans to upgrade the facilities there, and they're anxious to come before the planning board in May with a conceptual plan. the planning board in May with a conceptual plan. So that came as really exciting news.
Will they come under design review?
I'm going to encourage them, well, they do have detailed plans, and they're very clear that if they do come for design review, it would have to be...
Yeah, let's make, let's really encourage them to come for design review.
Mm-hmm. And we would notify the abutters in that case.
Absolutely.
And put an ad in the newspaper. We've also heard good news this week from Stratford Regional Planning Commission, that they've received some funding through the New Hampshire Coastal Program to assist the town of New Market with updating the land use and the future land use chapter of the master plan, which they're, the timing is impeccable, because I think we, we're discussing earlier this week that we really need to go through and update that chapter, because that's a real critical component to our overall zoning plan for the town. And Cynthia is going, Cynthia Copeland from the Regional Planning Commission is going to come back to us in May with sort of an overview of what the project will be, so we can find out what the work scope will be, and we can fine tune that and move that forward. There is going to be a rather innovative component to the master plan land use chapter update, and that is, and this is partly because of the funding source through which it's being funded, but there's a lot of interest in the concept of climate change and resiliency and what we can do at the local level to make sure we have adequate provisions in place to accommodate or to address flooding potential. And so that will be one of the critical factors that will be looked at as part of the master plan update. And also, there's a new model that is being developed through the University of New Hampshire on flooding and to help take a look at what the effects of climate change will be on flooding according to different land use scenarios and zoning scenarios in New Market, and that will be integrated into that overall plan. So I think it's an exciting project, and I thank you, Cynthia, for your assistance in getting that grant for us.
So if I can just interject to you, so are we talking Chapter 5 and 10, housing and land use?
There's a chapter, no, we're not talking...
Just land use, okay. So land use?
There's a chapter on existing land use, and then Chapter 10 is future land use.
Okay.
And the two of them go hand in hand.
Well, with regard to the flooding and the climate change, will we have to revisit the Water Resources chapter?
Cynthia's here, would you like to answer that question? We don't mean to put you on the spot.
I don't think so. I think there'd probably be more integration with the Hazard Mitigation Plan that's currently under update, because the concepts of resiliency in regards to flooding and storm surges is coming more out of the hazard mitigation aspects and protecting properties from damage, so.
Okay, great. And that's all I have for now?
Okay.
Madam Chairman.
I think it would be helpful to the board to have in our master plan, kind of a priority list of chapters that need to get updated, so we can maybe formulate a, a plan of action on that.
Certainly.
Our master plan should be updated every 10 years, I think is the recommendation.
That's correct.
So if we can just, at least, you know, every year, update a chapter, we can stay on top of the 10-year period, and if we can get ahead of that, that's great, too.
So, so what, I'm sorry, I don't, I don't understand, are you asking us for suggestions for which chapter should next be?
I'm asking Diane to give us kind of a breakdown of the chapters and when they were adopted, so that we can prioritize, you know...
So we can discuss it and prioritize it at the next meeting.
You know, how, where we want to focus.
On the tail of Chapter 6.
Yeah, and where there's funding to do it. I mean, obviously, this is a great opportunity, and, and thank you, Cynthia, appreciate it. And then also, I, you know, prioritization from the planning board level of where we would like any time that the town planner has dedicated to the planning board to be able to work, you know, on our behalf, the administrative end and the, and the recommendations and for the updating the master plan. And then we can go to the town administrator and say, hey, this is really where we want the planner to be focusing, as far as any work she's doing for the planning board. So, yeah, maybe if you can bring that to us, the next meeting would be great.
Sure, I'd be happy to.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Diane?
So are you going to be selecting, so you're going to be using two criteria to select the next chapter? One is...
I'm going to put together a list of all the chapters when they were last updated.
When they were, okay, yes, that's what I was going to ask you, one was knowledge, the other is current need. And marry the two somehow.
We'll, and...
I'm going to put together my suggestions for the ordering, present it to the board, and then we can work through that and decide whether...
Yeah, using both, okay.
Yeah.
Well, we'll have the board prioritize, because that's our responsibility.
Okay.
Of where we want to, but as long as we have from Diane, just the administrative end, as far as, you know, where we really need to focus.
I'm just looking here to see it.
Whether because of time and priorities.
Different chapters don't have as the footnote when they were last updated typically.
So that would be great. Okay. Moving into landscaping regulations, I would like to have a subcommittee go through the great information that was pulled together, and hoping that Elizabeth will chair that. We have a couple other folks who might be interested.
In terms of discussing what we've already presented, where Cynthia's presented, or what were you...
Right, I would like a subcommittee of the planning board to...
Present the...
Basically go through this.
Okay.
Make any edits, and then make a recommendation as far as if there's going to be anything edited here, versus trying to formulate regulations at the board level.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Sure, sure.
And then come back to the planning board and make the recommendations. I made extra copies for everyone, did everyone get one?
No.
No?
Let's see, I may have two copies.
Okay, so Elizabeth will chair that. And again, these are for the, this is all falling under subdivision?
Yeah, I think there's an extra copy.
It's subdivision and site view, right?
Okay, all right. And then...
We have, we have an extra copy.
All right, Janice? And would anyone else like to participate? Or bring, bring in someone from the public to the committee?
Yeah.
You know, Elizabeth.
We have an extra copy, sure.
Have there extras?
You know, if, so if there's anyone out in the audience, where, the, the TV viewing audience, we're referring to, yes, we're referring to proposed landscape design standards for our subdivision regulations and our site plan regulations. These only apply to, to commercial developments, the, our regulations, subdivision of land for residential or commercial, and multifamily units. So these regulations, just so no one thinks that we're, we're implementing, you need to mow your lawn every Thursday, they, they don't apply to single-family lots within the town or duplexes, right? So, that said, if there's anyone out there in TV land that has an interest in landscaping and these type of design standards that we would hopefully adopt and reformulate within our existing planning board regulations, please contact either Diane Hardy at the planning office or Elizabeth Dudley at, phone number?
Sure. You can, you can call my home phone number, 292-5140.
That was 292-5140, okay? So Elizabeth will pull together committee on that and hopefully get something back to us in the next...
How many members you suggesting?
It's your committee.
I have a question.
Yes.
What's the difference between this 3.09 and 3.06? That's in Title III, Chapter 6.
Chapter 6.
Not as high as verbiage, but I just, I...
Yeah, are you in subdivision or site plan?
I'm in site plan review regulations.
I'm sorry, you're in subdivision?
Site plan review.
Oh, oh, are you on the draft or what we just, we have now?
What we have now.
Okay, so we're, you're, you're on site plan, 3.0...
What was your question, Rick?
Chapter 6, site plan review regulations, 3.06.
3.06.
I think we're on 3.05.
Am I in the right church or the wrong pew?
Yeah, we have 3.05.
No, um, no.
3.06 is where it is currently.
Rick is correct, Lisa, these are landscaping under site plan. 3.05 is snow removal.
Right, 3.06.
Oh, that's going to be, okay, the committee will make sure that we're dealing with the right, 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 yeah, right church.
3.05.
We have updated...
In this case, in this case, the right pew.
And I would also ask that the committee take the existing law, and any changes they make, show it as a highlight to the existing rule.
I think we've done that.
I think it gets, there's a lot of changes, it gets pretty complicated.
I'm concerned about the changes, that's, I will admit that to you right now.
Right, Rick, we, I mean, we're dealing with literally two and a half pages, not even.
That's my other problem.
Two pages. No, we're dealing, two pages of the existing?
Yes.
I think it's reasonable that each of us as members familiarize ourselves with what's existing, and then when we look at what's proposed, if you would...
That's good.
Thank you. Okay, all right, so we're set on that? Okay. Next on the agenda, committee appointments. There are specific committees that we are required to have a representative on by the ordinances. The first is the Black Bear Tiff that Chairman Badger, prior Chairman Badger had served on, and so I had attended the last meeting, and I'll continue to attend. And I do have some background there from when I was on the NCDC, so there's a little, I can at least bring some history on that. The Downtown Tiff, that is on hold because I believe it's either being dissolved or something.
I used to be a member of that.
The Downtown Tiff?
The Downtown Tiff.
Okay, so we're going to hold off on that, I'm not going to make any appointment to that. We have a capital improvement plan, two separate committees?
We have an regular committee member from the planning board and an alternate.
All right. So, Rick, you had expressed an interest in that, so I would appreciate you serving.
No, I didn't say, I, I said, the word reluctantly was used.
I wasn't putting you out in the public with that word, but we, it would be great to have a, an alternate on that. And if anyone wants to step up as an alternate now, anyone with an interest in long-term planning?
Do it, you'll see.
No, I was...
Okay, all right, we've got some, we have some...
Let's see how this pans out for the rest of us.
Okay, we have some alternate positions that are open that would, would really, I'll make a comment on that, and that would probably be a good, good committee to serve on. We may have representatives on the following committees. One is the Advisory Heritage Commission. I know that Janice, you are serving on it as a council appointee, correct, at large? Elizabeth, I think that would be right up your alley, as far as, that'd be great if you would serve on that as the planning board rep. Conservation Commission, I've been serving on that since joining the planning board, and I've talked to Janice about taking over that, that representation.
Job's due to do it.
I appreciate that, Janice. The, we're also going to form a new committee for the planning board, which will be the Technical Review Committee, so that we really have that as a standing, you want to appointed.
As a standing committee, okay.
And I've asked Peter to serve as the chair, and under that, right now, I know Peter's working on the, on the bridge contract review and selection for the Downtown, the pedestrian overhead bridge. So anything kind of from a technical nature and contracts, maybe, you know, if Peter can serve on that and then bring people on as you need, and as applications come in, you know, we can determine who would assist there. So we also can have an appointment, it's nominated by the planning board, appointed by the council, doesn't have to be a planning board member, and that's to serve on the Stratford Regional Planning Commission. And Rick, you've been great, and we really appreciate you serving, and I think we have two, we have two spots there. Are you the only one from New Market that is on, that's representing the town at this point?
I resigned to that when I ran for the town council, so I've not been serving on that.
Okay, so you have not been serving.
No, there was nobody last year.
We currently have two, two openings.
Openings.
That, Rick, maybe if you could just talk for, just briefly, because they could be members of the public, so if, if, if anyone has an interest in this, we would love to have some help here in representing the town on this. So, Rick, if you could just kind of take a couple minutes and explain what the commission does and why it's good to have town representation?
The town, the Stratford Regional Planning Commission is involved in a lot of different things. It's involved with the, with transportation, with laws being passed in New Hampshire, the PES Air Force Bay, the PES...
Trade port.
Community, transport, trade port. And the bus line, et cetera. There are representatives from just about all of the towns in the Stratford Regional. I think there's only one or two towns that has no representation at all, and a couple of them don't pay the dues. They meet usually once a month, and, and the meeting is usually, when I was there, it was on, on Friday mornings at 10 o'clock, and they go through with some of the, the things that are live that are, and they'll represent from the Department of Transportation and the, several other state agencies. And occasionally, they'll have a representative come in from the state to speak to the, to the group. And then quarterly, again, when I was there, they had a, they had a, a meeting at night, and it was in, they moved from different towns. One year it was here, one year it was in Madbury and, and a few other towns, like, you know, and that's, that's quarterly that they had those meetings. Then they had an annual meeting in May, which they had at the, at Country Club, where they gave dinner to everybody who was a member and awarded commendations to the people who worked. There is also an executive committee, of which I was elected to in my second year. And it's held every Friday, no, it's one Friday a month, I'm sorry, and you go over the budget and everything else that they, they were involved with. That is time consuming, I need to admit that, but it's rewarding, and you find out a lot of information about what's going on in the area of Stratford County and Rockingham County. So those are the things that it's, it's involved with.
What would you say is the biggest benefit that, that, or reason we really need to have someone from New Market be, be attending those meetings?
There are certain laws that are being proposed and raised that have to do with various activities in the various towns, and we want to make sure that we're included in that, that we get some benefit from those rules and regulations that are coming down the pike. And, and they also have a, I meant to add, they, they took, what they call the pictures of all of the communities, and, you know, they, they have that kind of a thing that they provide to you.
Aerial photographs.
Graphics.
Aerial photographs.
Aerial photographs. You know, so I, and it's available to each of the towns, and I think New Market has that, and you want to make sure you're aware of that. There's a lot of documentation sent out in the mail that I still receive, because I, I'm the last representative, and I forward it to Diane, or if something comes up for Rick Malosky or Ed, I send it to them, and, you know, just to keep them...
Oh, that's good. So, any, is there anyone who's sitting on the board now that would have an interest in, in having us nominate, nominate them to the council to serve as a representative? Anyone from the public, if you have an interest, you know, just please contact Diane Hardy at the planning office, we would love to...
I'll consider it.
Okay, that'd be great.
Good. I think you'd enjoy it.
I, I think so, too.
I think you'd enjoy it.
So, yeah, I think it's important to have representation from the town, and so if anyone does have some time, that they can, you know, volunteer, and if, and obviously, Rick was great, because he would report to the planning board at our monthly meetings and when something was going on, and I will make a firm commitment that if we have a member of, a non-board member serving as our representative, I'll put you first on the agenda. All right. Moving towards planning board alternates. I'd like all of us here to really, when we leave tonight, to really think about some other members of the community, please, if there's anyone out there that has an interest in serving on the planning board, we have two alternate positions open. You know, our functions are only really as good as, as what the board can bring to the town, so anyone who has an interest in planning, anyone with an engineering background... the town, so anyone who has an interest in planning, anyone with an engineering background, development, land use planning, budgeting, real estate, we've got, you know, a nice broad, you know, makeup of, of community members here and maybe if some other, if members would, would comment on, you know, some other types of assets that would, that would be helpful to bring to the board, certainly, you know, would wish that you would share them. Because we really do need to, we need two more alternates, it's really important and we hope that there are people in the community that will step forward and be willing to serve.
I think it's a great stepping stone. And one of the things that was clarified for us last year is that now the alternates are invited to sit with us here and consider the things and ask questions and so forth in spite of the fact they wouldn't be able to vote directly unless they were appointed for that meeting or future meetings to be a representative in case of an absence. But it's a great introduction and a great step. I started as an alternate, not that, not that I've turned out particularly well, but the point is.
Yes, you have.
It gives you a start in, in the process and gets you involved and gets you interested and gets you to know more about what's going on and some of the people that make it go on, so.
That information came before the Stratford Planning Commission originally and I, when I saw it, because it was very germane to, to us here, I put a notice on it of the fellow who represented us with the state and said, I want all the data sent to me, so I want to keep up on this. There was three things and that was one of them. So I was able to tell the town when soon the law was passed that this was now approved.
And as an alternate, again, I'll make a commitment, you will be very involved because we do have a lot of working committees and I think it's important that it's, that these committees are not just made up of, of sitting members of the planning board, you know, especially when we're dealing with applications and to participate on the technical review committees, so. Any help would be really, really welcome.
And I just, I just would like to add that if anyone has a particular vision for the town, you can really help to implement that vision. It's, it's exciting opportunity really for anyone who has a affinity for the town or has ideas about where they think the town should go.
Absolutely, I'm really happy that you shared that because, because that's what we are about, particularly as we, you know, jump into master planning, chapters and updates and rewrites. That really sets the, the foundation for how any zoning should be adopted, it's, you know, what's, and also how other, how other committees and departments function in town. I mean, is it consistent with the master plan? I mean, you'll hear that over and over in, in the zoning and in county council meetings, you know, what's our master plan? Where's our vision? So thank you, Elizabeth, that's well said. The last item on the agenda is discussion of rules of procedure. The last time that this was revisited was 2009. I don't really want to get into a discussion of it tonight. I think if we, everyone just takes it home and reads through it, if there's any kind of suggestion, updates that we might want to bring before us, you know, at, at the next meeting, I'm going to put it on the agenda for action. Diane?
Yeah, what I wanted to mention, and thank you, Rick, for refreshing my memory. We did make some changes in response to the legislation that Rick was just referring to, to the zoning board rules of procedure and I think we should make similar changes to our rules to clarify, you know, what the role of the alternates are. And that they do have the opportunity to participate, but not necessarily vote. And to really, you know, define that. So if you would like me to, I can draft something and we can take it up at the next meeting.
Absolutely, yeah. No, yeah, because Diane, if you can go through it and from the regulatory perspective of any updated RSAs to make sure this is consistent, that would be great. And then also any recommended, recommendations from, you know, things that might need to be changed relative to, to, you know, how we've been acting as a board over the last three years.
Sure. May I ask you a question? Am I wrong in thinking that an alternate can be appointed as a voting member of the board if needed?
An alternate would always be appointed as a member of the voting board if the, if we have a full board but someone needs to recuse themselves?
So, so then an alternate may actually be able to vote on.
Oh, absolutely. Or if, yeah, if there's a, a member that's, like in the case tonight, Justin is, you know, is absent. We would have appointed him, we would have, had Adam come, then he would have been appointed if we were voting on anything.
Yeah, so they, in essence then, an alternate can become a bona fide member of the moment and, and make a vote.
Always, absolutely.
And so that's an exciting.
Absolutely.
Possibility to.
And many of us sitting up here started as alternates, so I think, you know.
I self-inclusive.
It's, it's not that you have to take that route, but, you know, it's, again, it's, we're, we're looking for two alternates and so if anyone has an interest, you know, please step forward. I think, oh, and then the other thing I'd like to, to have Diane look into is the, our application regulations relative to the documentation that the applicants are required to submit. I would really hope that we can participate as much as possible in, in trying to address just some of the cost issues of the town. Last meeting was just a great example, when the Verizon application came in, I mean, we all had packets that were half an inch thicker more. And that's just not unusual when an application is submitted and the requirement is only for three copies and I think that it would be better and we'd be more consistent with other towns, so it's not something an applicant's not expecting, is that they, an applicant provides the number of copies that are required for the board members as well as how they need to be provided for department heads and I'll, and Diane can deal with that. But there really should be minimal administrative expenses incurred for the town in photocopying applications.
Excellent.
So they can come in and, and not just from the cost perspective, but also some from time. As soon as they come in, then it's easy for Susan to just put them in our, in our boxes and send out a notice that, hey, this application came in, so we shouldn't be seeing these a few days, you know, or, we should be seeing them within the 10-day notice or whatever that.
Well, we try to do that.
Yeah, so it would be really beneficial and then Diane can spend her time dealing with comment, review of the application for completeness and then report to us before we make a motion to accept. And then also her planning comments relative to the application, if it's something that is complete that we would be accepting, you know, to, to hear. Is that, everybody kind of on board with that? All right. Great. Well, any other new business or old business? Any committee reports? Economic development update? We just had a brief meeting the other evening, it was really productive though.
Rezoning.
Rezoning, sorry. Economic development, been there. It's all about economic development, right?
May I clarify?
Okay.
Sure, go ahead.
Is it something that we just discussed?
Yes.
Oh, sorry.
No, I just want to clarify your expectations for me for the landscape regulations. I just, in terms of, I, my, my father's very ill at present and I, I don't, I just wanted to make sure that, that I'd, I'd like to put that off for a couple of.
It's your committee.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to make sure that I wasn't expected to.
No.
To do this for the next meeting.
No, and there's not, there's no applications that are pressing before us and.
Okay, okay, so I, I just want to.
No, and reach out, no, you need help, just reach out.
That I don't, I, it's not going to be, not going to be steaming ahead on that in the next couple of months.
Yep, so when you want on the agenda, just let Diane know, she'll get it on the agenda, you know, at this level.
Okay.
First for, for action.
Okay.
Okay? Um, any, just a few comments on where we're at with the zoning review?
Actually, I think the community would be very happy when we complete our color-coded map, 108 corridor, to show what is now in that area and they can see, they'll come across what we're proposing. And I just feel very confident that I think the majority of the community would be happy with how we're proceeding and what our vision is for the community. And that we are going to be looking into having more community input and another organization's going to help us hopefully to facilitate those little workshops or whatever you want to call them. And it's really important that you come to those meetings beforehand or submit your comments to us now and, I mean, and when we have those meetings, not after the fact and complaint, we want your input upfront and please, and Diane keeps these, and Val, we have these posted as, when we have them. We have the, what we have done so far in draft form, we have them in the town planner's office, you just have to go and ask Sue Jordan, there's copies ready for anybody to pick up free of charge. And we really would like your input now, like we had those couple of meetings on the Saturday, we had one on a Saturday morning to accommodate those who couldn't come and we had one during the weeknight. We want you, we want the town to be happy. It's not just the subcommittee's town or the five or 10 people who showed up that day, it's the 7,000 people, whatever, who live here that we want, a majority of the input. And I think the vision is going to be happy.
And just to kind of add, to, to expand on that, the subcommittee is, you know, our recommendation is that we take the south end of town and that really needs to be treated, really as the whole gateway and what's going to happen down there. You know, not just on one particular property, but really the whole end of that town. So we've kind of segmented that off from our immediate focus, which is really dealing with the core of 108 with the B1 zone and then obviously tonight, you know, trying to figure out the islands. So we're, we're meeting and we're moving forward and hopefully we'll have something, you know, really for, for discussion at this level. I would hope within the next 60 days, maybe not next, maybe next meeting, but certainly by the June meeting.
Are you considering gateway, I'm sorry, I just don't recollect exactly in terms of the gateway, delineation of a gateway area, are you also considering that for the area in north as well, coming from Durham? Is there?
Where, yeah, our focus is to take the south.
It's a pin on the south, yes.
Because you have such a different land use down there.
Okay.
Existing land use is to, and so much going on, whether it's between large undeveloped parcels or, you know, Black Bear Tiff issues and.
Sure.
Is to just take that away from what we're trying to do, which is really to kind of facilitate some, you know, more infill type development or reuse development along 108. 108 within, I'm going to say, the, the outlying areas of the downtown, because it really seems evident that the town is developing from the center out.
And, and so my comment is just to also think about Newmarket as people travel from the north too. I mean, it, it's always nice, I think, to have a, a demarcation from one town to the next.
Yeah.
And that's, that's.
Yeah, no.
I'm just throwing that out there as, as something to think about. I know the focus is on the south the moment.
Well, it's just such a long-range plan to do that. I mean, look at, take Straton for instance, a three-year project. You know, we're, we're not looking to have a three-year project to figure out the, the B1 areas on, flanking either side of the downtown. It's, that's, I just don't think that, the committee's perspective is that's not in the best interest of the town. Certainly in as part of the Chapter 6 recommendations, is we really need from the economic development end, a vision for the town. And where that's going to happen is in if.
Developing.
Large undeveloped areas and that really is the south end of town. So that's kind of where that was spun off, because we really want, you know, whether it's a, a joint committee of the council and the planning board and NCDC, Advisory Heritage, you know, other groups in town to formulate a more broad focus and, you know, get these visioning, you know, meetings going and have that professionally done. That's, I think, where that needs to head. That, that was kind of the conclusion that the, that the, that the subcommittee came to.
And so you're also proposing that the north end of town be also considered, but not at the same time, so it doesn't become too big a project?
Yeah, the north end of town is just so different. It's so, it's already developed, so it's a matter of more, how will it get redeveloped?
Right, but that's still.
If at a point in time, it gets redeveloped.
But I, I would just argue that it's still important to consider that as another gateway. Different kind of gateway, but, but.
Well.
Another, different. Well, that's, that's what my two cents is.
Right, that will, that will be a discussion for when we're before the board and let the board decide that.
Okay.
Okay. Any other new business, old business? Any motions?
Make a motion to adjourn, sir.
So moved. Thank you. Meeting adjourned at 8:15. Thank you all.
Thank you.